Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome you to the County Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. This is our annual meeting. Mr. Bronco, could you read the opening statement, please, sir?
Of course. This is a regular meeting of the County Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to KRS 61-826 and may be viewed by the public at the Kentucky Pension, the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority offices located at 1260 Louisville Road in Frankfurt, Kentucky. It is also being broadcast live via Facebook. If you're speaking and you're not appearing by video, please identify yourself before talking. If the audio or video broadcast is interrupted, we will attempt to reestablish a connection. Connection cannot be reestablished within 30 minutes. The meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to a later date.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rankin, could you call roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Pendergrass?
Here.
Dr. Carver?
Here.
Mr. Cheetum?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
I'm here.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Here.
Dr. Hackbart?
Here.
Dr. Milkman? Mr. O'Meara?
Here.
And Mr. Powell?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could you read the public comment today, please, ma'am?
I guess, ma'am. This is a public comment that we received. It was late for the last meeting, so we elected to read it for this meeting. This came from Melvin Schaefer. With the election for 2025 board member Betty Pendergrass and Jerry Powell, whom have served two terms, very well, I might add, and if chose to run, will be their third term. With the passage of House Bill 484, separation of the systems, will they be starting a new three-year term because of the separation and new law? Also, how will the election determine if six possible individuals or more are selected by the board on the ballot and three of the top vote-getters are non-hazardous, and the hazardous finish fourth or lower after the votes are counted? How will this work? Separate election, or will it end in possible lawsuits? Are the appointed board members being subject to the three terms? Respectfully submitted, Melvin Schaefer, retiree. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rankin. We will come back to those questions when we take a look at the CERS board election policy a little bit here shortly on our agenda. Could we have, our next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our March 11th meeting. Do we have any additions, corrections, deletions?
Motion to approve is written.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Dr. Carver. All right. Thank you very much. Any other discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you very much. With that, we have the minutes approved. On the agenda today, what I've done is put a few administrative items on the agenda first because they were carried over from our March 11th meeting and wanted to make sure we got those handled before we got into any new business. The first item on the agenda is a bylaws revision. We'll change that date to the date when we give it second reading. This is going to be our first reading. What we've done in this agenda is to codify the recurring meeting schedule so that we don't have to approve a calendar every December. And then Sherri, if you can go to page 20. We have also deleted the Legislative Committee section, which was a recommendation from one of our trustees so that we don't get crosswise of the legislative process at the General Assembly. Does anyone have any questions about these revisions in the bylaws?
I'd like to hear more about why we're eliminating the Legislative Committee.
Mr. Cheetum, I'll hand that off to you.
Okay. Probably two things, Mike, that came up along the way. Number one, in conversations with legislators over the last at least two sessions, as well as some of our other partners as far as League KLC, KCO, School Board Association, you know, they were really getting tired of seeing a, something that wasn't a housekeeping bill coming through every year, number one. And it just put us crossways with some of the people with some of the other legislative committees. The other part of that, to me, is we've always got the ability to appoint an ad hoc committee to deal with issues from one year to the next, and that just, particularly after we had our training on open records, open meetings, especially with regard to what constitutes a quorum, you know, one of the things that I'd like to see is, as needed, when we see something that needs to be addressed with regard to, that requires the legislature to address it, let me rephrase that, that we deal with that, you know, through ad hoc committee on that particular issue. But ultimately, it really came down to an issue of the legislative people, PPOB, those folks, really didn't want to keep seeing a big, long, drawn-out, sponsored bill to address minor issues every session. Does that help answer your question?
Well, I would clarify that a little bit.
I don't know if it answered my concern, though.
Yeah, CERS never did prepare, draft, or submit those housekeeping bills. Those came from KPPA. Go ahead, Mr. Foster.
No, I mean, every organization I have been associated with, similar to what we do here, had a legislative committee. It was, I thought, was a very important function of the committee system, because lots of bills are introduced, and every once in a while, we get a good bill introduced. So the legislative committee has done a good job, as other organizations, to ferret out things that are troublesome for us and create a problem for what we stand for. And being able to identify those early on seemed to be an important function of the entire board, and it'd be very cumbersome for the entire board to act as a committee at home, given how much legislation is introduced every year. So I always thought the legislative committee serves an important function, based on my experience, anyway.
Yeah, I don't know, Mike, whether, what KPPA board is doing as far as a legislative committee, but-
They don't have one.
The bigger, the bigger concern is, you know, when it comes to those things, to the extent that we can, because you're always going to have issues that pertain strictly to CERS and those that pertain to the K, but to where we can work jointly with them on those type issues, I think that was the real, real concern that was being expressed to the folks I talked to, anyway.
One criticism that I've heard is that the General Assembly did not want proposed bills that had not been filed yet to be discussed publicly. They want those proposals close to the vest until they iron out all the final details. And so they were concerned that our legislative committee would be talking about proposed bills that had not been either prefiled or filed.
That's certainly part of, you know, part of what we heard, but I think it's just, it was more an issue to me, anyway, with regard to putting us in a position that we did not get crossways with the legislature, bottom line. You know, I don't think it prevents us from being able to address either issues that we see on our end or those that they bring to us to ask our opinion on that they may be looking at. It just doesn't, it doesn't require a meeting on every little detail that comes up that, you know, could be easily addressed either administratively, number one, because I think that's one of the issues that they have, is they see a lot of those things that get put in the housekeeping bills as something that may have been able to gotten addressed from an administrative standpoint, not necessarily had to have been codified.
Yes, we don't have much control over that. Those housekeeping bills are written by staff, KPPA staff, so. Any other trustees that have some suggestions on whether or not we need a legislative committee?
Well, I'd weigh in here. As a member of KPPA board, I receive daily updates about bills throughout the legislature, and the CEO does, too, representing CERS interest. If, if the CERS board does not receive those, maybe that could be a way for all the CERS board members to feel like they are educated as to what is happening in the legislature and have an opportunity to react if they see accordingly. This might be something that only KPPA board members get, so if not-
I think it goes to all the trustees. I think Sean sends it to all the trustees.
Then I think that might address some of the concerns I heard earlier about knowing what is being introduced and what bills are before the legislature for consideration.
And if for some reason you're not getting those email notices from Mr. Sparks and the communications team, if you'd let him know, he'd be glad to add you to the list.
They do.
He does do a great job of keeping us informed on that.
I guess the question that might arise is, if we don't have this committee, and that there are sort of policy legislative issues that occurred to the board, what would be the mechanism to make legislators aware of those opportunities, I guess, be the question? Ed, you have a suggestion?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Hackbart. I believe that the way House Bill 484 is written, that the legislature perceived that the CEO would be their primary contact about issues related to legislation.
So we still would have that track?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I think that's actually stated within the bylaws somewhere, if I remember correctly. Anyway, that was just, that was simply my concern, Mike, was it, we've got several committees. I like committees. I think that's where a lot of the work gets done. I think we need to have as many people on those committees from the different areas so that they gain experience in those areas as possible, but legislative would be way down on the total poll as far as the things that we have purview or should have purview over.
Sherri, I'm going to go get the page number here. If we go to page 14, item number I talks about the CEO's responsibilities for legislation, making sure that that status chart that Mr. O'Meara had highlighted gets to all the trustees. The CEO and the general counsel can prepare draft changes, or we can have an ad hoc legislative committee recommendations. Item I has all those descriptions. So the last sentence has the CEO, general counsel, and board chair working with the General Assembly Legislative Research Commission to advocate for passage of any of our legislative proposals. So I think when I look at Dr. Hackbart's question, if we had a particular issue that we wanted to address in legislation, I think we'd have to create an ad hoc committee and get that committee working on that particular project. Any other thoughts from trustees, whether or not we want to keep that legislative committee or let it go and address it on an ad hoc basis?
Well, my thought is, having been involved this long time, is you have end committees that meet year-round that put together various proposals and draft pieces of legislation that happen before the General Assembly is actually meeting, and they have, the legislation effects could affect our system dramatically if we don't track it properly. And I heard comments, you know, about there was a lot of housekeeping matters, and there are. Well, that's one of the values of the legislative committee is to cut through the chaos and set the housekeeping matters that basically are neutral in nature aside and look to things that dramatically may affect our system. So I think that's probably the value of having a legislative committee, is to cut through the clutter and separate administrative matters that may be fairly insignificant from significant matters that may all of a sudden pop up in the bill when they're in session, rush into a committee meeting, and then they pass it on a considered agenda, and we've got a big problem. So I like filters in the system. And certainly, the legislative committee has a strong, significant filter that serves a good purpose for various organizations. But that's just one man's opinion.
Well, I tend to agree with you. I can tell you, we've had some pushback from legislators who do not want to work with trustees. They want to work with staff.
They can work with staff. I think the legislative committee could come up with a consent and how they feel about it, and staff can work directly with them. I mean, that's, I don't know if that's a reason to do it ways with the committee. I haven't heard of reason. I thought it justified, in my humble opinion, that justifies doing ways with the committee. I hear of your concerns, but I don't know if that's fixed by doing ways with the legislative committee.
Mike, we're having a little bit of trouble hearing you on this end. Just for my clarification, are you, recommend we leave that committee intact?
Yes, I am, uh-huh, yes.
All right, just want to be sure.
Mr. Powell?
Never mind. I've changed my mind about my comment.
Okay. Well, I think to clarify and move forward, I'll entertain a motion about specifically just the legislative committee on whether we want to keep it or delete it.
Betty?
I'll make a motion.
One further question?
Go ahead.
Well, I guess I'd be curious, Ed, with the fact that by laws, you're the person that's supposed to work, interact with legislators.
Right.
If issues come up, who do you look to, to get advice and suggestions if we don't have this committee? Is there a process that we would have to do alternatively to having this committee to be your ineffective group to work with you in that situation?
Yeah. Let me take that question back to its, to its highest point, and I think the chair mentioned that there was considerable pushback from legislators about trustee involvement in pending our potential legislation. I personally don't think that's something that, that we can overlook. To the point that Mike Foster made about things happening outside of session, there were a couple of examples of that that happened before the start of the 2024 legislative session that were discussed over the period, over the course of the summer. A lot of meetings were held around that and about those issues, and it's always been my policy, as I've been in this chair, to inform the chair and the vice chair of those types of issues. Now, there are a couple of those issues actually made it to legislative form in the 2024 General Assembly, and we tried to report on the status of those, but there were two or three others that were discussed over the entirety of the summer that never made it to legislative form in the, in the General Assembly. So it's a, it's a balance of knowing where the General Assembly, to the extent that one can, being outside it, knowing where they are, but certainly being prepared to report out on any issue that affects the pension systems globally, and certainly any issue that would specifically affect CERS.
Dr. Hackbart, that gets you the information you needed.
I think so. Thank you.
Mr. Powell, you were about to make a motion?
I was. I was going to make a motion that we do away with the Legislative Ad hoc Committee.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Yeah, Betty, let the rest of the show that opposed the motion, please.
And I would agree. And I would agree, I also oppose the motion, but I believe it carries, it's like six to two. So the next motion I'll entertain would be a motion to accept the revised bylaws as presented.
So moved.
Moved. Second.
Thank you. So I have a motion from Mr. Powell, and the second was from Jim Tony, or Mr. Falkerson. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Right.
Any opposed?
Yeah, I opposed amendment, so I have to oppose the revised bylaws because of my previous suggestion.
I agree, and I also oppose. All right, that, that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is our CERS Board election policy. I'll turn this over to Kristin here in, in just a minute. At first, I want to address some questions in the public comment that we just heard. Ms. Rankin, if you can go to page 26, please, ma'am. Item number three on this page, and Ms. Rankin, if you can enlarge that just a little bit so that that paragraph is easier to read. The policy itself and the statute require us to have two positions that represent non-hazardous positions, and one position that represents hazardous positions. So the Board picks three candidates for each of those three positions. This item number three provides that each of the voting would occur so that, let's see, it's not reading what I wanted. They, they vote for at least one potential candidate per open position on the ballot. So that, I think, gets us to the point where, let's see. Where the way the process is handled, that we end up with two non-hazardous trustees elected and one hazardous position elected.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Kind of expound upon that. What will happen when it comes time for the nominations? There will be, as you said, there's potential up to three candidates for each position. So you would have anywhere between two to six candidates for the non-hazardous positions on the Board, and then one to three candidates for the hazardous, for a total of three to nine candidates for all the positions.
Correct.
Maybe that may be a little more clear for, for somebody. Because each one will have one position and up to three total, so. Hope that addresses our issue.
I was also looking in the, in section six, the election by membership, which is the next section down, to make sure that we have instructions to the members to vote for two non-hazardous and one hazardous. And right now, what we have in section six just says that the ballots will include instructions for voting for a candidate.
I believe item number 10 describes how we determine the winner, which discusses two non-hazardous and one hazardous.
Thank you, Kristin. That helps a lot. Ms. Rankin, that's on page 28. Yes. So this item number 10 is where we get to that election process. I think it's very important that we do have the trustees split with the, the two non-hazardous and one hazardous. Now, in terms of the term extension, we don't have anything in the statute that changes whether or not the terms start counting April 2021, or the terms include the service prior to 2021. The, the statute as it sits right now is not particularly clear. Mr. Powell, have you been having some conversations about that particular issue?
No, I haven't. The only ones I had is it was related to the KPPA Board, and the position of the, our, our legal staff, and they're, they're here, and they can feel free to correct me, is that since the CERS Board and both, and the KPPA Board were both new boards that was created, then the terms preceding the split did not, was not included. Mr. Board, that was your interpretation and Mr. Bronco?
That's my understanding. I think that's logical.
Yes, that's the way I understood it.
So that would mean that the three elected trustees on the CERS Board have served one term next March?
Correct.
And I think it's that way because if the legislature wanted it another way, they would have needed to put that in the statute.
Okay. All right. So I think that answers the, the primary questions in the public comment. Ms. Coffey, I'll turn this back over to you to cover some of the more general topics in this election policy. We don't really have any significant changes in this policy versus what we have had in the past.
That is correct. Sherri, I believe it starts on page 22. Anna, well, there were no changes on the first page. But just so all the trustees know, this election is set to kick off early next year, so that's why we're looking at this policy, just to make sure we have it in place before we start the election process, which will start later this year. So Sherri, on page 23, I think that's where our first change starts. And just a comment for that first one, the application will not go live on the website until we're actually taking nominations. That's why if you went out and searched for it, you couldn't find it under the forms section yet. But as soon as we are taking nominations, it will go live, and you will be able to find it on the website, other than having to search for it like you have to do now.
And the, just to clarify, the deadline for this year's round of applications will be?
I believe it's July, it's typically July 1st, I believe, is when we have set the due date.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Right. So that next change, taking out the word resume, I have no objection.
I think that that section is just defining the ballot, and it's talking about whether a candidate is a member of another organization. Maybe they listed that organization on their application, maybe they listed it on their resume. The statute actually looks at both. I'm not sure we need to delete that.
Yeah, my only reason for putting that in is you have a regulation that this also follows.
Oh, okay.
That this section is lifted from, and resume is not in that sentence, in the regulation. So I only think that they should be consistent to avoid confusion, but it ultimately is not that big of a deal.
Right. I was looking at the statute, not the regulation, so I would agree that if, if the regulation doesn't allow us to pick up information from their resume, then maybe we need to leave that out.
Yeah, because we've always had to submit an application regardless, but you could attach a resume to it for more detailed information that may not be, have room for on the application itself. It's not so much a resume in lieu of, it's more of a supporting document.
Right.
So Sherri, on the next page is the next edit. So for the write-in candidate number 15, there, we have said full name, which is defined, which we're defining in this as first, middle, and last name. There's been some talk about this over the past couple of times that we've looked at this election policy, to change that to just say first and last name, because the people writing in a candidate may not know a full middle name. They, at best, they may only know a middle initial. So that is what this proposed change is.
I think it helps to have the middle name in there, just to clarify that which John Smith you, which Jane Evans or whatever. I'm kind of inclined to leave middle in there. What do the rest of trustees think?
I think an initial would probably work as well, instead of the full name, because it could be, yeah. Like I said, they may not, like I say, Kristin said, they may not remember the whole name. But, you know, you could think that they could remember the first middle initial and then last name. That should be sufficient to separate any similarities in names, I would, I think.
Do, do we request any other identifying information?
Not for the write-in candidates. We only request their name.
I would hope that anyone voting for a write-in candidate has had enough conversations with that candidate that, A, they're willing to serve, and B, they have that name information. But middle initial might get us there.
Of course, there may be instances where they don't have a middle initial either, or middle name.
Any other thoughts on changing that phrase or not?
And I don't know, I don't know if this is a valid question or not. I can see, you know, several different issues with requesting it, but I also see issues of not being able to identify who they're talking about. And the reason why I asked the question about any other identifying information, Michael can, can, is it appropriate, not appropriate, to be able to sit there and say, you know, Joe, Billy, Bob, whatever, and identify what system he is a participant in as, as the employer?
Ms. Rankin, if you go to the next page, there's more information about that write-in candidate. And this asks the Division of Internal Audit to go look at these criteria.
Yeah. I guess, Mr. Cheatham, to, to your question, my, my, my larger question, I guess, maybe, and Ms. Coffey may be able to answer this for me, is what would happen if, you know, based on this information, if we get a write-in candidate and we cannot identify who that person is based on the limited information we have? What are our next steps?
Well, the only time it would really be a concern would be if that write-in candidate received the most votes, because then we would have to know who had been elected.
Yeah. And I guess that would be, my, my question is, I don't, I don't know, I'm not aware if we have procedures for that instance or not. And so to, to Mr. Cheatham's question is, you know, whether the appropriateness, or whether we should, you know, ask for something more of this, beyond this information, it's, you know, I guess if we don't know what we would do next, then maybe we need to be a little more specific in what we're asking for here, so that we don't run into a scenario where we can't resolve it. We, we can't identify who got elected, because we don't know who that person is. We get to a point where we can't identify them.
Mr. Powell?
Instead of having the issue of requiring a middle name, middle initial, maybe we could amend it to a, a middle name if known. That would help separate some, and not necessarily put a, a super huge burden on the, the voter who's trying to do this at midnight on the last day before they're due, you know?
I'll also add, the way that it works in, you know, statewide elections, is that write-in candidates have to submit a declaration of intent for their votes to be counted. And I don't know if that's something that the Board would want done or not, but I'll just throw that out there as another method of dealing with this.
As an election poll worker, we get a list of write-in candidates that have filed that paperwork and are eligible for write-in votes on the ballots. I, I tend to agree with Mr. Board that we have a bit of a blank here in terms of trying to figure out who that write-in candidate is, if they get a, a significant number of votes.
Well, I think some of that issue would be taken care of, because we also have a one-by-petition to where they, so you can get a number of votes, but you, and, and it's kind of like, yeah, Mr. Bronco was mentioning, you know, you got the paperwork submitted, this, so you've got the by-petition, which will have everything except for, you know, the Board approval, when it comes down to it, because it's done after the Board makes their choices for the, the three candidates for each seat.
Is it necessary, is it necessary to provide an opportunity for write-in candidates? Maybe just have qualifying candidates who have to basically fill in all the appropriate paperwork so that we would take care of this problem by not having write-in candidates?
The statute does require provisions for write-in candidates.
Realize that, but maybe something we want to think about in terms of legislative action.
Well, could, could we define a write-in candidate as one who has submitted the petition documentation?
I think they'd be on the regular ballot.
Exactly.
They, they wouldn't be a write-in, then. They're on the regular ballot by petition.
The statute just says, provision shall also be made for write-in votes, which I read is different than anybody who writes their name in has to be counted. I think that the system can do something and require them to have something, to have that write-in candidate counted that is short of the petition. So they just, there just has to be a, a procedure for a write-in candidate to be elected.
Ms. Coffey, do you have any suggestions how to resolve this issue of the write-in? Since you're the most well-versed of all of us here.
I'm, I would say, I mean, a couple of options. You could, like Mr. Bronco was saying, set out stipulations for the write-in candidates to meet. You could potentially require not just a first and last name, but also the first or the last four digits of the social security number, like is required for the petition. That would help us identify those people, much easier than just a name.
Could we ask for a mailing address rather than the last four of the social security number?
I don't see why not. Yes, just anything else that would help identify who they are.
So that what we'd need to do to this? So that what we'd need to do to this definition in number fifteen, in addition to full name, we'd, we'd say full name and mailing address or home address. Mailing address might be a post office box if, if we ask for a, a home address.
We're going to go with that.
Use Mr. Powell's suggestion of first, middle, if known, and last name, and then add in a home address.
Would, would voters have to submit all that information?
Yeah, that's the problem.
That would be almost impossible.
Yeah. I, I, I'm not so sure Eric's original thought was to, you know, anybody that's wanting to run as a write-in have to file a declaration so we can at least match up a name to the declaration. At least that way whoever's voting would only be responsible for getting the name right.
So the number fifteen would read, a write-in candidate means an individual whose full name was written in the space. In addition, or at, at the end of that valid ballot sentence, the next sentence, we'd add one more sentence that said, in addition, the write-in candidate shall file with the KPPA Division of Internal Audit and application.
Just a.
And request for write-in candidate.
A statement of declaration, because if, correct me, Christine, if I'm not interpreting this right, if somebody goes to the trouble to petition to get on the ballot, then their name is going to appear.
That's right, yes.
Write-in candidate, it's just going to be a blank left up to the voter to fill it in, correct?
Right.
Correct.
Okay, you know, if anybody, if anybody's wanting to, certainly ought, you would think they'd be more apt to, to file the petition and actually get their name on it. I, I think a declaration, if we can find a way to word that and put it in there, give them that option, but it, you know, they would need to file that with, you know, KPPA Internal Audit, you know, within some period of time prior to the election.
Yeah, the actual, the statewide statute is, you file the declaration of intent. It has to be twenty-eight days before the election and they pay a fee. And I think it's a very simple form, just saying that, you know, you intend to be eligible for the office or whatever, but I don't think it has to be very complicated for people or anything. I think it's just something that is reasonable as a provision for write-in candidates to have, to just make it easier on the systems to match up, you know, who is Jim Smith? Is that the same as Jimmy Smith or, you know, stuff that can happen?
Ms. Coffey, could you take that statewide form declaration and come up with a form for our system that would be simpler than the application process, but gives the write-in candidate the responsibility for providing information to the Division of Internal Audit that would allow you to identify that person once you see votes for those write-in candidates on ballots?
We can do that, absolutely.
It seems that.
So this. Go ahead, Dr. Heckbert.
Normal process when you have write-in candidates is that candidate potentially is actually kind of more or less being drafted by playing on their voters, and that that person may not necessarily be the person who is instigating the write-in. And by creating another activity that has to be carried out, seems to me it questions about sort of the idea of a write-in ballot. And then, because otherwise the person declares he's almost just a regular candidate.
I, I, I don't absolutely agree with you. They, but if you don't want to draft somebody that's not willing to serve either.
Yeah, that would be the question I would have, is, is, are they voting for somebody that's not willing to do it? Mr. Powell, you have a comment?
I have a question. This is going to go back to Ms. Coffey again. During your tenure, how many write-in candidates have we had?
Well, we always, I think the most we had one year was ten, but the most votes that any write-in candidate has ever gotten has not been more than five.
Eliminated.
Okay.
So the question becomes, are we given a broad enough avenue of opportunities if we have the nine candidates that are selected by the board, plus any candidates that have gone through the petition process, and they also appear on the ballot? So that should, in, does, I, I, I guess the question is, does that give all those candidates who have a willingness to serve the opportunity to get their name in front of the voters?
Did, did somebody say that it's, it's in the statute that we've got to make a provision for write-in?
And, and that's what number fifteen does.
Yep.
And we started out with just whether or not we wanted to include middle name or not, and we've gotten a, a little more complicated in, in terms of trying to identify who those write-in candidates are if they get a plurality of votes.
We started, we, instead of telling what time it was, we started building a clock.
Created a bigger problem, same.
Yeah. So I, I think a middle name is known, and a declaration of intent to write in would make that each job easier for our Internal Audit group in order to do that. Would you have a?
We, we might be.
Could it file the day of the election with that cause, you know, you know, so you'd have it when it actually comes time to vote?
Yeah, you have it.
Would there be a timeframe?
Yeah, have to be filed within a week or ten days or some.
Well, we could make it, we do by January thirty-first. When do we send it to ballots, Ms. Coffey?
January twentieth.
We, we, we have a solution in search of a problem.
Yes. So.
Exactly.
Okay, do we, do we want to add a sentence that calls for filing a declaration of intent by January fifth?
I'd say thirty-first, because, you know, they, they, they can file it afterwards, after, or after the ballots go out, because it's write-in. And as long as it's received before the actual tabulation.
The due date of the ballots?
Yeah.
So January thirty-first. So we'd, we'd get Kristin to draft a sentence for us about that declaration and come up with a form and get that additional piece of information so that if she had to track down a write-in candidate, she had enough information to do so. Does that make sense for the rest of the trustees? And we would use middle parentheses if known.
That would be my motion.
I entertain a second to that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Cheatham. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that was the easy one. Go ahead, Ms. Coffey.
Okay, Sherri, I think the next change is on page twenty-six. So that first one in item number one under section five is just removing that first sentence. I'm, I'm okay with this suggestion. So that would just allow that people to file a petition at any time. Right now, it starts off with after the candidates are nominated. And the reason it started with that sentence was because until after the candidates are nominated by the board, you don't know if you're on, if you're on the ballot. And the, I think the way that we looked at this with the petition is that someone who filed an application, if they weren't selected by the board, those were probably the people who would then turn around and file a petition. So that's why that sentence started out that way. It is not a requirement, though.
Comments? Okay, let's go on to that next one in paragraph two.
Right. So this is just a suggestion that from changing to say no later than November thirtieth, you would change it to match the wording of the statute, which is not less than four months of the end of term. So it removes the November thirtieth date and uses the wording of the statute.
Uh, I kind of like the November thirtieth date because it comes after we've gone through the process of the board nominating, and then puts a timeframe on just the petition process and gets it in place so that Internal Audit can pull together the final ballot. So anybody have an objection to leaving B in there as it is? I think this was just a logistical change to make the process run smoothly. Go ahead, Ms.
All right, so on the next page, Sherri, that part right there that's marked out, that was added the last time we did this by the KPPA legal staff. I think it was just an indication that if one candidate requested information, this was just making note that all candidates would be provided with that same information. That way one candidate doesn't have information that the others do not. This isn't a statement, I think, that's required. It was just recommended by our legal staff last year, or last time this was looked at.
Any suggestions on this one?
Is the legal staff still recommending this wording?
Mr. Board?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think, I think the recommendation was just to make sure we were consistent with information we were providing to candidates.
That's correct.
I'm okay with leaving this one in.
The next two, I'm sorry.
I'll go, I was just going to say, I, I agree with Betty, because, you know, the, th- this is just, just covering ourselves to make sure that if somebody, one candidate, make sure all have the same access to the information, and it's not, couldn't be any interpretation of favoritism over one candidate.
Right.
That's all, thank you, Ms. Coffey.
Any other comments on that item? Sherri, if you'll scroll down. These next two, they come straight from the regulation. That's why they're in there this way. I know there's a comment about them, but that is where that wording come from. It's straight from the administrative regulation.
This, this seems to be a logistic issue in terms of getting the ballot done in time so that we can get it out the door and give members opportunity to vote.
Yeah, no, a lot of my comments are, because I, when I was reading this, I think everybody's terms sync up, but I think in the statute, there's the potential for terms to start late possibly, which might, and I, ha- having not gone through any of these elections, don't know how it works in practice, but didn't know if that would upset these set-in-stone dates for certain.
Well, what, what has happened in the past is if we had a trustee that didn't serve the full term, we went through the process to fill that vacancy, but the vac- the, the person who was selected to fill that vacancy, that term ended on the same date as the ending date for the trustee who left.
Right.
I think this was more framed toward when we had two CRS trustees elected in one election, and then the third one was elected the next year in a different election back with, because myself and Betty got elected at the same time, and then the former trustee, Dave Rich, came a year later. That since it's been fixed to where, and it's a cost-saving measure to bring all three at the same time. So that, that, I think that's where it was, and maybe the regu- our bylaws and regulations didn't keep up with what actually happened in the legislature.
I thi- I think Jerry's right about that.
Yeah, I think if you all can keep them on a certain date, that's better than having things shifting around. I just don't know if there would ever be a situation where you'd need to shift around.
There hasn't been in the past.
And if there hasn't.
Since we changed.
I would keep dates. I would ignore my comments about not keeping the calendar dates.
Okay, so that, that would be both the comments on this page. We'll lea- leave those as they are. Okay, Ms. Coffey?
And then there is one more comment is on page twenty-nine. And this is just a change that was made when we were going through the Internal Audit Charter. I think that's where this change first came up, saying that a representative from the Division of Internal Audit would serve as a technical advisor on the evaluation team. So we took them out of being a scoring member and added them as a technical advisor. So that's what this change is reflecting.
So that keeps us consistent with the charter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, any trustees have any other questions on this one? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the election policy as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. All those, any other questions, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have an election policy. Thank you very much, Ms. Coffey, for bringing this to the board in a timely fashion before we get to the next election.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Hall, if you'll take us through the administrative regulation, please, ma'am.
This is Jessica. I was actually going to be the one presenting the regulation.
My apologies, Ms. Bobin.
Go right ahead. That's okay, that's okay. Sure, actually, can we go to the PowerPoint on this? I think it's on pa- starts on page sixty-six of the board books. Because I think this gives us a nice overview of what the regulation is, and if we could, we'll go ahead and go to the next page. And I want to start by just talking about the terminology changes in the regulation and just, we have updated the terminology throughout the regulation to be updated and consistent with the language we use in all of the KPPA, CERS, and KERS regulations, and also with the definitions found in our general definitions regulations that covers all of our regulations. However, words in section, or the definitions found in section one of this regulation are only specific to this regulation. Um, next page, please. Uh, some important things that we want to point out as far as definitions in this regulation to ensure that we know who we're talking about with each group that we talk about is for this regulation. Well, for all of our regulations, agency means the KPPA. That's a consistency through, across all regulations. Um, and then for this regulation, board is the Board of Trustees of CERS, and system is CERS. And we can move to the next slide. And so basically, our amendments to this regulation are to really add in a lot of information about existing requirements and processes that are already in place. Um, and that includes what prospective employers are required to do to participate in the system, the requirements for employers who are splitting, separating, or forming a new entity or merging, and also details on the requirements for existing, the existing requirements for those inactive employers. Uh, we have added one thing that's, that's, that will be a new requirement, and that is that the inactive employers need to annually report to the KPPA as to whether they remain inactive. And then we also updated all of the forms that are incorporated by reference in this regulation. And then we also updated all of the forms that are incorporated by reference um in this regulation. So that's kind of an overview of the regulation. Does anyone have any questions about it or feedback?
I'll entertain a motion to approve this administrative regulation.
So moved.
I accept the motion.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That motion passes. Um, at this point, I'm gonna hand the uh chair over to uh Mr. Cheatham. And Ms. Rankin, if you'll put me in the waiting room, I'm recusing myself from the next topic.
Okay. You had distributed in your packets a letter from Mike O'Connell, Jefferson County Attorney. This is in relation to requesting waiver of penalties with regard to uh Louisville Metro. This goes back into the primarily the twenty-twenty-three fiscal year. Over the course of approximately eleven months, uh, they, and and I think this came about due to a change in the software vendor that Louisville Metro was using for, I don't know whether it was just payroll or financials or or what, but uh, they went uh for the better part of eleven months, uh, compliance, which instigated a a penalty from the system over the course of that period. If, can't tell who who's on the on the call and who's not on the call. Rebecca, is she on the call?
Rebecca's not here today, uh, but myself and Dewan Sarot are are both here who worked with Rebecca on this matter. We can uh provide some more color if you would like, so I'll just.
That's what I was looking for. If if Michael, if you and Juan would, you know, kinda give us a little bit of a background. Uh, Betty wanted to recuse over this issue cuz she used to work for uh that particular employer. And I've spent a little bit of time talking with Michael and talking with Rebecca over it. If they'll give you a little color on this, then I'll tell you where I think we are headed.
And Dewan, I know you're on, so please feel free to jump in here and as well, but um, so each month, every employer is required to submit their monthly reports, um, tells us who's on their payroll, um, you know, submit their uh and and send in their contributions, both employer and employee contributions, um, to uh to our staff here. And we do, and Dewan Sarot, uh, he's the division director for what we call ERSI here, Employee Reporting Compliance and Education. Um, and they do their work with all those reports, ensure they're accurate and correct. And if there's any problems, they send, there's a, you know, a back and forth. They get all those correct reports, and then they do their work, and we get all the money and we ensure the money's accurate. As Mr. Cheatham indicated, um, Louisville Metro was undergoing uh a change in their payroll uh system, and um their payroll system was unable to accurately send us those reports. Uh, they were notified about that. And uh, accurate files to the old payroll system while their new payroll system was getting all the bugs worked through in a testing environment. And so unfortunately, every month that they were late sending us those reports, they get a late filing, a late reporting penalty um that they have to, that's attributed to them uh by not filing timely. And that late uh reporting penalty is Dewan, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, it's seven and a half percent um of their total monthly contribution they have to pay us is the percentage. And so um that went on, as Mr. Cheatham said, for a number of months. Um, and the only way they were ever able to get called up is that we had to uh make some exceptions to our internal processes to help them get caught up. Uh, Dewan and his team typically only are able to accept one monthly report at a time because that monthly report obviously will have some errors in it when you're dealing with um an employer as large as uh Louisville Metro. And if they allow, you know, one monthly, one monthly report, just pick a month, say January, get sent in, and it's gonna have a number of errors when you're dealing with someone, an employer that large. They get all those errors fixed, and then that forms the basis for February's monthly report. And hopefully, the errors are fewer because you've got all the errors fixed in January. However, if you're accepting multiple months simultaneously, you never get to fix the errors at the baseline level. And so now you've got two, three, four, however many months you're se- you're accepting at one time. You've got all of these reports with all the same errors that the original month's report had that you've never got fixed to form a solid base on. And so that's typically why Dewan and his team only ever accept one monthly report at a time, get all those errors fixed, and so the next month is a better product. However, um, eventually, when we realized that this just Lu- Louisville Metro was never gonna get this corrected without some assistance and some help, Dewan and his team lifted that requirement and accepted uh a few, I don't know how many Dewan could tell you, that multiple monthly reports at once, and um worked through a lot of those errors themselves to get Metro caught up and and current uh where they are. But in the process, they did rack up um a fairly substantial number of uh amount of penalties. I think it's on the second page of the letter um that's on your screen now, uh there in number five. Um, it is a fairly substantial amount of fees and or penalties that um that uh at the outset of this, and Dewan can tell you a little more information about this, um, there was an initial amount of fees or penalties waived that were associated with this um to allow, okay, Louisville, we understand you have this problem. We understand you're working to get it fixed. We'll away, we'll waive this month's fees. I don't know if it was one or two months, but we did waive a a set amount of fees at the front end, but then it was, okay, now we have to impose these penalties um from this point forward. So they've, they've sent in this request asking for the, they wanted, uh Dewan and Rebecca and I met with them, and they asked us to waive it, and we said, no, we're sorry. They asked me, you know, what is the process for getting this to the full board? We want to appeal to the board. And I said, there's no administrative appeal of this matter. The only employer administrative appeal that's allowed is pension spiking. This isn't pension spiking. I said, but I, you know, I can't prevent you from writing a letter to the board chair or the CEO. You know, I I can't prevent that from happening. You're, you're, that's your right if you want to do so, and so this is the result. And so Dewan, if you want to add any additional color to that, please do that.
Uh, no, you did have a good explanation of it pretty much. The only thing I wanna add is we did initially waive two penalties uh because initially, um, they didn't tell us prior, they only told us about three weeks prior to them changing their new payroll system uh that they were actually doing this. Uh, so in trying to work with them, uh, we did initially waive the first two months of penalties that they were late. Uh, but then they were having so many issues, they pretty much scrapped that entire process, and I believe uh went with a new vendor to, you know, put in a new payroll system at that point. Uh, and at that time, after speaking with Rebecca, we decided, you know, we're no longer gonna waive any penalties because, you know, the issue's on their end, so uh, but that's all I want to add in.
Dewan, uh, refresh my memory. I don't have my numbers in front of me, but when when I was looking at it, can you give me a ballpark of what the dollar figure, their contribution dog, dollar figure is per month?
Uh, well, I can pull that up. It pretty much fluctuates, uh, but let me pull up.
The the rea- the reason why I ask is is just to be able to put in context the the amount of money that we're talking about in relation to what the penalty was, number one. And as I said, it appears to have gone on over several months. And if you all recall, it went on during the audit period, the fiscal year period, which recall, required us to go back and have to restate uh some of our financials, which we, when I say we, I mean the system incurred expense for for that as well. So, um, and then, of course, there's an opportunity cost of the dollars not being in the in the accounts, meaning the investment accounts over that time period.
Yeah, so I I I just pulled up the last account, the last report they submitted. I mean, their their salary uh for the month is over twenty-eight million dollars. You know, and employer contribution is approximately nine million dollars uh, you know, each month. Um, so you know, I mean, I mean, of course, Louisville Metro is one of the largest employers we do have, so.
Yep. And I don't think anybody wants to beat up on on any of the employers. I think it, my understanding from talking with Rebecca, there is a set written policy to deal with this situation that was actually predate separation, correct?
That is correct. It predates separation, um, and there is uh, you know, part of some of the belie- don't quote me on this because I'd have to look back to to double-check this, but I believe there is some part of the, maybe in some of the non-codified language of House Bill forty-four, the separation, and it may be in some of the very last parts of the bill that says that um any of the administrative uh policies that were in place pre-separation remain in place until they are um replaced by the new boards.
The uh, you know, it 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 accursed me, and and I was reading through our bylaws as well, obviously like everybody else was last night. And, you know, I think it was on page twelve of this board books anyway, you know, references our board's responsibility to oversee, you know, obviously, the investments and administration, that sort of thing. There's nothing in there as Michael indicated that we are an appeals board. Our job is to to implement and ensure the policies and procedures are being appropriately administered. My recommendation to the board at this point is uh that we have ed and worked with Michael Lamb to go back and review, ensure, A, that the policy was followed correctly, and B, in in that review, to determine whether there may or may not need to be some adjustments or changes that need to be made going forward. It it was pointed out to me in looking into this, this really is primarily a C issue. Uh, K board does not have to worry about penalties being assessed against the state. So uh, that would be my recommendation at this point.
Ma- uh, Mr. Chair, may I ask a question of Dewan?
Oh, yeah.
Dewan, uh, could you give a little more color? You mentioned that uh the Louisville Metro told you about three weeks prior to changing the system, that they were going to a new system. Can you give the board just a little more color on what your policies are uh upfront? What should a uh respective employer say to you uh when that employer's about to change a system? How much lead time should they plan to give you? And then what's their responsibility via uh written procedure as to test mode that the new system would be in and for what period of time it would be in test mode?
Yeah, well, we need to know several months in advance. The reason why is because when they report in that new system, they're actually reporting in a testing environment here. Uh, w- we have them report in a testing environment, and it has to pass validation. Uh, it can't be so many errors, you know, on that file that they submit. Uh, and, you know, because we won't accept it if it doesn't pass validation. So we usually require, you know, at least a few months in advance, and it is, it takes several days of testing that file. Uh, if it, if it doesn't pass, we contact the employer to give them all the errors of why it didn't pass, things like that. And then we just continue to, they continue to submit it through the testing environment. Uh, you know, and the the issue with Metro on the, on the first time, they uh they were nowhere close, you know, with with the number of errors. They were nowhere close to getting that that uh payroll system validated. Uh, so eventually, I I don't know if they got frustrated, but they went with a new vendor. And then from there, you know, we continued to work through that testing environment. It took a lot of back and forth. Uh, you know, it takes a lot of back and forth to to get it validated and under the error threshold. Uh, you know, which is five hundred errors. Uh, and you know, Louisville Metro has a lot of accounts, but it has to get under that five hundred error threshold uh in order to be validated. We eventually actually lifted that five hundred dol- uh five hundred error threshold to allow more errors to come in. Um, you know, because we were trying to assist Metro in in getting this whole process completed. So we did ex- uh lift that uh to where all the payroll system could accept more than five hundred errors, and then we would correct it on our end. And like Michael explained, at one time, we did allow them to submit three reports during a monthly period. And, you know, my staff worked countless hours in getting those errors corrected uh in order for everything to be validated. Um.
One other question, uh, when, when an employer goes to a new system, you require that employer to maintain the old system until the kinks in test mode in the new system are worked out. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Did Louisville Metro do that?
No. No, uh, they did not do that, but they eventually got it to where the reporting official could manually submit it uh somehow through their old testing system, uh, through their old payroll system. Uh, but no, at first, they did not do that.
May I just, just to you, good question.
Yeah, one question. What was happening with the money all during this time? Were they paying, or were they waiting till the reports were correct?
Well, in order to submit the money, the report has to be submitted all at one time. So uh, you know, all three components, the details, the summary, and the payment all have to come in at the same time, but that can't happen until the uh payroll system is validated, till that month is validated. Uh, so they were just holding on to that money. But like I said, they eventually got it to where they would manually submit that uh report and then submit that payment at that same time, so.
Anybody have any other questions?
So you indicated that we are not an appeals board in this, regarding issues of this nature. Is this correct?
That that is my understanding. I think it's what Michael referred to earlier as well.
Do you have any history of other situations similar to this that would be educational in terms of how, in the absence of ability to deal with appeals, what was done in those cases by our historically? Is it, do we have any information about that?
I'm not aware of that. I, Michael, I don't know if you or Dewan are.
I'm not aware of that either.
Yeah, no, I'm not aware of that at all.
So fines have been imposed previously and it's paid by the responsible parties, is that so?
Yeah, there's, the the minimum fine is is typically, it's a thousand dollars. And, you know, ever, every time we meet, you know, there's usually se- several on that list. And there's several on the list that get that waived, that, you know, but they, it goes through the process to do so. The issue here is the fact that we're talking about Louisville Metro, and, you know, it's substantially different dollar figure we're dealing with here than.
And and the waivers are by staff?
That, yes, yes.
Are there conditions that they lay out to have a waiver?
Yes.
And those were applied in this case, as far as we know?
Yes.
Yes, there was a policy that was adopted by this board uh in those situations where the uh, that that allow the staff a uniform a method to waive them, such as uh having a new employee doing the payroll. Uh, another one would be uh where it gives them a little uh. Another one would be where it gives them a little leeway that somebody has done a pretty good job, but they made a mistake this time, is it's a, they are, they are in good standing, and so, at the discretion of Arisa, that they can waive it for that one time, because they've done good before that. It's just, you know, people make mistakes, and it gives them an opportunity to, to allow that to happen. Dewan, what was some of the other ones?
If it's a system issue on our end, something that, you know, system issue on KPPA's end, then we will waive that penalty as well.
But this is a policy that's been set forth by the CRS Board. It may actually have been the old KRS Board, but this one was adopted by the, by the board.
And if I could, Dewan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard you say that we waived two months of full penalty when they didn't preserve the old system while the new system was being tested. But it was only after they gave up on that new system and said, "We're gonna start completely over," that KPPA then decided that we would not waive any more fees?
That is correct.
Dewan, can you give us a ballpark on what that waiver was for those two months?
Uh, yes, I think I have it. Let me see. All right, the first month we waived, it was one hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars, and then the second penalty wait we waived was seventy-five thousand, one hundred ninety dollars.
Again, my recommendation at this point is that we verify that the policy was followed correctly. And I think the best way to do that is to turn that over to Ed and Mike Lamb. And if there's any issues, then they can report back. And we'll deal with it at that level.
Have we ever had penalties to this magnitude, even percentage-wise? So, I know some payers are a lot smaller, so the percentage would be, the percentage might be the same, but the dollar amount might be a lot less.
Right. With Louisville Metro being so large, they're probably one of the largest employers we have, so that, them and just, it's one other agency that we've had issues with previously, that their penalties are pretty large, but I don't think they compare to Louisville Metro's. They're probably the largest.
So, in terms of the fine, in part is based upon income foregone as a result of the funds not being in the fund, right?
Correct.
And are there other costs being incurred by the system as a result of the delay in payment, transferring the funds to our system? In other words, are we incurring other, have we incurred other costs in addition to the loss of investment income? Is there an estimate of that?
Probably the only other cost would be the additional cost during the audit process as far as restatement, but I can't, I can't tell you at this stage what that dollar figure is.
And Dewan, the extra time that you and your team devoted to correcting these issues, is there a cost attributable to that?
Well, we did not document that, but it definitely was a cost, because my staff had to work many late hours, work on the weekends, to try to get this caught up for Metro. So, it was definitely a cost, but we didn't document exactly how much.
Okay.
Is there room to negotiate a cost instead of charging them the seven hundred and sixty thousand? I'm just asking if there's room.
Do you mean the penalty each month?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so, do we have to charge, is it seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars or nothing? That's basically what I'm asking.
Well, it's based on statute, so, yes, we have to charge that amount.
Is the problem, the communication problem between the systems been solved? Is it resolved now?
Uh, yes, they have been reporting correctly with no issues, so, we haven't had any issues of them recently.
We have several large agencies on the case side that's always seems to be in arrears on some of it. Are they penalized also?
Now, the, under eighteen A, those do not get penalized, anybody under eighteen A, but as far as the quasi's, yes, they do get penalized if they're late.
Bill can...
Okay, thank you.
Did you have something, Mike?
I'm just, I'm thinking out loud, I don't know what my judgment is yet, that's why we're talking, but I am hesitant to have a substantial penalty on someone when software experiences are not talking to each other, and that does happen. It happens quite often. This is not an isolated event. It might be an isolated event for the retirement system, it's not an isolated event in general. And I'm trying to get some feeling or judgment on whether they actually in good faith to address the issue or not. I'm not sure what the answer is right now. I'm inclined to waive it, but I want to justify my decision.
I guess a question, question, can we waive it? That's an interpretation maybe we need to look into.
Yeah, exactly. That's, yeah, that would be part of what I would...
Yes, right.
Yeah. To both Dr. Carver and Mike's point, I think we need to determine if we have the ability to waive either all or any part, number one. That's certainly a question as to whether we follow the policy, and whether that policy needs some amended. So, yeah, I think we've just gotta, we gotta root down into this thing and figure out, because there's, you know, there's cost on our end, there's opportunity lost, you know, I just punched basic, you know, some basic numbers. If you, if you assume twenty million a month, that, and I don't know at this point how long it took to get that paid per month over the course of the ten, eleven months that this drug out, but those dollars are sitting somewhere, and somebody was earning at least a nominal rate of interest on it when we weren't, so that...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a suggestion. I think that your ideal of putting Ed and Mr. Owens and the finance, but I think we ought to include the, somebody from internal audit as a validator for, make sure everything was, all the policies and all followed the proper steps also.
Good, good suggestion. I guess what I'm sure is...
And Mr. O'Meara has his hand up, by the way.
I was just getting ready to call on him. Bill?
Well, I have a stream of conscious, thinking out loud, same as Mr. Foster. A major, a major system upgrade that is focused on payroll, that doesn't test the payment to the number-one pension system three months before it goes live, seems, seems to have a lot of room for improvement when you develop a system. I've had systems that took over twelve months to develop, and we were testing throughout most of that time. So, that's one observation. Another observation is the, the, the system that we have in the retirement system is unique. It's not an off-the-shelf test of when you become eligible and when things start, when they stop. So, testing is uppermost in getting your system in sync with the pension system, lack of errors. I understand why we don't take the money before the exceptions come under a certain amount, but that is our policy, not to allow the employer to, to pay and then ask for a refund or have penalty on, like your estimated taxes, where you have, you pay some and know that you're gonna have to pay others. So, I see a lot of arguments going both ways. The other thing that I would have a question for our legal staff to look into is, I always function at the local level, that you couldn't forgive interest, but you could negotiate penalty, if I'm remembering that correctly. So, I would question of this amount, what is interest and what is penalty? I think that would clarify what, whether this is something that we can consider or not. So, those are some comments and suggestions that I would put forth in the analysis.
If I may, I like it. I appreciate Bill O'Meara's comments, because historically, in similar situations, they had the money, we did not for an extended period of time, and therefore, it would be appropriate to charge interest on it, but for legitimate reasons or understandable reasons, you can waive penalty but not interest. So, if that, if that's possible, and we do a breakdown of that, I'd like to see it.
I will, we'll definitely look into it. I will tell you, first, the first inclination, the statute says that, you know, it's a penalty in interest, I believe, and it's seven and a half percent. I don't know if it's a breakdown, if any further than that, just a sets of percentage. So, and I don't even think the percentage is statutory, it's a percentage that's adopted by the board. So, I will, but I will dig into that and report back. I'll work with Mr. Owens, if that's the direction this board chooses to go, as has been recommended. I will work with Mr. Owens on looking into that and putting together something for this board through him.
Is that seven and a half percent for the duration of that failure to meet the payment?
So, it's, it's seven and a half percent for each month, but it's only applied one time. So, there's, it's seven and a half percent, so if they're late for January, it's seven and a half percent for the month of January. And then, if they're late for February, it's seven and a half percent for the month of February. Even if by February, they still haven't fixed January's report, they don't get hit again for January.
It's not cumulative?
Yes, it's just one time for each month, so.
Jerry, you got a hand up?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion. I might, I'd like to make a motion that we create a committee, work group, whatever you want to call it, to follow up on this with Mr. Board, Mr. Owens, some representative from internal audit, and a representative from the Office of Finance, Mr. Lamb, for example, to look into this, make sure everything was before we do anymore, and to ensure that all policies were followed correctly, discuss this additionally with Louisville Metro, and then report back to us, and that we table any decision until such time they can get back to us.
Got a motion. Do I have a second? A second? Second by Dr. Hackburg. Any other discussion, questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Have fun. Okay. With that, you want to get Ms. Betty back?
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm letting her in as we speak.
Okay. Be a bad idea. Take a look, see if there's anything to be seen outside.
See if it's dark.
Okay.
See if it's still night.
If, while we wait on Ms. Betty, if we'll...
She's on.
Okay.
Come here.
Betty, we were just discussing, we might all take about a ten-minute break here?
Uh, yes, I think that would be a good idea.
Excellent.
We will recess for ten minutes, please. We will recess for 10 minutes, please. Thank you so much. All right, now we are ready to move into the annual meeting portion of our agenda. We're going to start with officer elections, and I'm going to let the vice chair, Mr. Cheatham, start us off with the election of a chair.
Well, all right, as everybody knows, this is our annual meeting, which time we elect a new chair, vice chair. I will, at this point, entertain a motion to appoint a, or nominate a new chair, or a chair.
I'll make a motion to nominate the, Mr. Cheatham for chair.
Got a motion from Mr. Powell. Any other nominations?
You'll need a second, I think.
Yes, sorry. Need us, anybody want to second that motion then?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Foster. Any other nominations?
Yes, I would nominate Betty.
Got a nomination for Dr. Hackburg for Ms. Pendergrass. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a second from Ms. Carver, Dr. Carver, excuse me. Any other nominations? Going once? Going twice? Okay. You have a motion, nomination ceases?
I'll make that nomination, or make that, or second that motion.
Okay. Not sure who the first was. Was that you?
Mr. O'Meara.
And second was Mr. Powell?
Correct.
Okay. All right, at this time, we'll begin by voting. Probably the best way, how do we, how have we typically done that? By voice vote, or roll call, or what call?
I would, I would say roll call. It's my suggestion.
All right. That being the case, Cherry, if you will call, roll.
Okay.
All in favor of myself, Mr. Cheatham, signify by saying aye, or, excuse me, Cherry?
So, we'll vote on each motion. Temper.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out how, you know, if there was a way to do it by, but everybody on Zoom, we can't do it right in. Right in and hold it up like this.
Okay, so, so just to reiterate, this is for voting for chair. Is it just voting yes or no for Mr. Cheatham?
Yes.
Do we, do we not just say, since there's only two, we, we name whichever one and see if there's a majority?
That would be my suggestion.
That'll work. Cherry, if you want to call, roll.
Will do.
Based on that.
Okay. Ms. Pendergrass?
I'll abstain.
Dr. Carver?
Pendergrass.
Mr. Cheatham?
Well, I'll, I'll be cordial and abstain as well then.
Mr. Foster? Are you muted, Mr. Foster?
Mr. Cheatham?
Okay. Mr. Fulkerson?
Mr. Cheatham.
Dr. Hackbart? I'm sorry, Dr. Hackbart?
Yes. I'm going to pass for a while, okay?
Mr. O'Meara?
Pendergrass.
And Mr. Powell?
Uh, Mr. Cheatham.
Okay. Dr. Hackbart, would you like to? Cast a vote?
I guess Pendergrass.
So, we have three and three, it's a tie.
In that case, I will, I will decline the nomination and let Mr. Cheatham be our new chair. I've done it for three years, I'll be happy to turn it over to him.
Betty, I...
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I think I appreciate that.
Yeah, he says that now.
Let me, let me, for the record, say, I, you know, Betty has done an absolutely tremendous job, and I would not have been able to pick anybody to have led us through this first year, few years of transition. Yes, so, don't, you know, I...
Agreed.
Just greatly appreciate that service.
But, yeah, and let, may I add that this, the labor and time that she's committed to the, to the chair position has been outstanding and quite astronomical and dedicate, shows her dedication to the CRS system.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but I would move that we, as a board, thank Betty for her service as chair over the last three years.
Take that as a motion and...
Second.
JT, second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, folks, I really appreciate that. It's nice to be, to hear the positive feedback.
With that, we'll move on for nominations for vice chair.
I'll nominate Mr. Foster.
I've got a motion from Jerry, Mike Foster. Any other nominations?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Bill. Always forget that part.
I move nomination ceases.
Got a motion, nomination ceases. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mike. I look forward to working with you.
You're muted again, Mike.
I said, I was, I tried to be funny, I said, "Thank you," I think, but I do appreciate your votes, I try to do my best.
Mike, I, I don't know you well enough to know whether you will appreciate this or not, but I do want to take the opportunity on behalf of the board to, you know, pass on our condolences about your mother. I understand she passed last night, but...
Yes, thank you very much, she had 96 good years, and so, she had a nice long life, but you hate to lose her, but I do appreciate your kind thoughts.
Well, I, I know it's like to, I don't care how old you are, to lose your mother, there's nothing quite like it.
Right.
So, okay. With that, let's move on into the rest of the agenda. I don't, I think next... Betty, would you like to finish up this meeting?
Uh, no, that's fine. You got a copy of the agenda there so you can...
I do. Just be prepared when we get to the sections with regard to the strategic plan.
Okay. I can chime in there. Go ahead.
Well, I'm trying to get booted back up.
Next thing on the agenda is the PPW Board of Elections for the directors.
Yeah, and I believe Steve and Jerry were going to give us an overview of that.
Yes, sir. Steve, you want to go first, or you want me to go first?
Uh, you can take it off if you'd like.
All right. PPW is a separate entity from the KPPA, CRS, and KRS boards. It's, it was established as a means to safeguard our, our trust, the monies in our trust, and where if there was some sort of liability issue, the liability would be against PPW and not, at the time was KRS as a whole, which is now KPPA. But that being said, what happened is, well, they had bought both the A and C building, which is the 1260 and 1270, the upper lower buildings, that are currently in use by the KPPA. The, the board of the PPW has appointed agents, which are also staff members of KPPA, who help with a, and we've established maintenance contracts and hired a maintenance project manager for, to take care of the buildings, and it is his responsibility to the, do this. Previously, all this was done through a third party, who was a property manager and had took care of all this, and as a result of the audit conducted a few years ago, we found some issues and, and thought the best thing we could do right away would to be assume these duties ourselves, which immediately resulted in a, what I would consider significant cost savings, which we are still continuing today. We put out the bids in, all the, the major contracts, we've got contracts for the AC, we've got electrical, whatever needs to be done, if the, any staff member of KPPA or the, the maintenance manager that they've hired has an issue, they can, we have resources available to immediately access, get, get the problem addressed, fixed as quickly as possible. You know, sometimes we may have to order parts, and it may take a couple of days to a week, but it's a, it's a time saving also and a cost savings for us by doing some of this all on our own. And what has happened in the past, the, the board of directors for PPW represents all three plans, there's three members of that board. The CRS has a representative, KERS has representative, and SPRS, and that way, each trust is, has an interest and a voice on that board. And the way that it works with elections, when they have their annual meeting, is when they'll actually commence the... commence the elections, uh, they'll elect their Chair, Vice Chair, uh, we'll have a Secretary and a Treasurer. Uh, but this is done by proxy. We take, do our vote here today. We, uh, have Mr. Willer as our, as the proxy representative to the PPW, uh, since it is a, uh, investment also. And he will bring forth all the candidates that has been presented by each Board and, uh, and then they will be appointed to the PPW Board.
Yeah, I, I think from a, from a proxy voting standpoint, that's exactly correct in that this is treated as an investment and consistent with, um, you know, the, the authorization in the IPS and the investment proxy voting policy, um, you know, as the election of Directors is considered a routine voting issue. Unless there's a proxy fight for seats on the Board, the vote would be in favor of the proposed slate of Directors. So I think CRS just needs to nominate, um, a candidate. Uh, and then at the annual meeting, the annual shareholder meeting in May, the PPW Annual Shareholder Meeting, um, I would be the vo- the proxy and vote on, uh, behalf of CRS.
And there are no other, uh, shareholders, it's all, uh, plan, plan trust members.
Correct.
That being said, I think that pretty much sums it unless somebody has questions.
I would, I would encourage all of you, you know, Jerry's been on this board and been a representative there for several years. Uh, this was one of those areas that, that kind of fell outside of the things that we normally see and deal with. Uh, but, but I would encourage you to, uh, pick his brain, to get a good understanding of what, what that's all about and the way it works and its relationship to us. So, uh, but with that, we need to, we need to nominate, uh, somebody to continue to represent us on that Board. So I'll entertain a motion for nominations.
Nominate Jerry Powell.
Got a nom-
I'll second.
Got a nomination and a second for, for Jerry to continue. Are there any other nominations?
Move nomination cease.
Motion
And these would be nominations to go on the ballot.
Sorry, Steve.
It would be nom- no- nominations to go on the ballot?
Okay.
Yes.
Clear to be, for, for Jerry to be our nominee on the ballot. Uh, got a motion and a second that nomination cease. All in favor of Jerry signify by saying aye.
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 And I'll abstain.
Jerry, I, I appreciate your service there and I, I look forward to learning more about that side of the equation.
Any, anytime anybody's got a question or want, want to talk about it, they're welcome to call me in. We'll, we'll, I'll bore you to death.
Oh, okay. With that, we'll move on to the next item of business and that's the
Mr. Cheatham, apologies. I, I think, I, I think we also need direction, you to provide direction to me, for me to, to vote the, the proxies.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Uh,
I'll take care of it. Uh, I'll make a motion to authorize Steve Waller as CEO to vote for the PPW shares, uh, that represents the CRS and, and authorized, as authorized in the CRS Investment Policy.
Okay, I've got a motion.
And the proxy voting policy.
Second.
Thank you.
Second, I miss Betty. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Steve, you will continue to carry that honor of voting our proxy.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on. Next item of business is the annual contract with Johnson Bronco and Brennan. I believe we've got a new name on, on the headline since our last contract. Uh, Eric, you wanna?
Yeah, I'll, uh, give a little background. So I, we admitted a, another partner to our firm, Patrick Brennan. Hence the name change. Um, this contract is largely the same, the most important part, the fee is the same, one seventy-five an hour for attorneys, fifty for paralegals. Um, other than that, all I've done with this contract is make it look more professional and, uh, simplified some of the language that was, you know, just pure legalese so that it's easier to understand. But nothing of substance has changed, other than the dates the contract runs and the name.
Okay. As far as I'm aware, everybody's been happy with your work and responsiveness. Do I have a motion to accept and approve the, the contract as presented?
So I move
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by JT, second by Mike, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Eyes have it. Congratulations on a new year.
Thank you all. I always appreciate it. I, it's, it's, this is, as strange as it sounds, one of my favorite things to do. So it's a healthy relief to see
You, sir, are a glutton for something.
I don't know what you do there. I'm unique. I'll take that.
Mr. Lamb, I, I'm assuming you're available. If you would like to, uh, give us an update and your recommendation as it pertains to the, the ASPER?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Cheatham. Congratulations on your nomination for Chair. Look forward to working with you in that capacity.
Thank you, sir.
Um, this memo documents all of my research, uh, that was asked to be performed on the presentation of the ACFIR that KPPA publishes. Um, I'm not gonna go through all the pages, but I will go through the recommendation. It is my recommendation, uh, that we, starting with this next fiscal year end, produce two separate standalone ACFRs, one for the County Employees Retirement System and one for the Kentucky Retirement System, which includes KERS and SPRS. Um, I make this recommendation after doing all the research and with the support of my staff as well as the executives at KPPA. Um, I, it's kind of vague on who, if anybody needs to approve this actual recommendation, uh, but I felt that since there was going to be, or at least my recommendation was that there would be a C ACFIR and a separate K ACFIR, that I felt it might be appropriate for the C Board to, um, approve that recommendation if they so desire.
Okay.
Uh, question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, if, could, it, I assume that's gonna be additional printing costs than currently what we have?
Well, we haven't published the ACFIR in paper in a couple of years. It is published to the website when it's done, so the current ACFIR that's out there, it does not have a hard copy, uh, printed. So there would not be additional printing costs related to this ACFIR unless we did a few internally. Um, you know, but i- if we were to publish them and print them, yes, it would be duplicate costs on the printing, but that's not the case.
Would this, uh, would you still continue with the single, uh, print of the, uh, SAFR?
So I'm, I'm gonna give you my opinion on the SAFR.
Mm-hmm.
I don't believe there's any GASB guidance or any other professional guidance that dictates how the SAFR should be presented. Um, I think that it's a smaller document. I think that it contains all of the information for all the systems that we administer. Um, and I feel like it would be better to keep the SAFR as one document. That's my opinion. Um, in discussion with some other divisions within KPPA. Um, but I, I, again, that's not necessarily an accounting decision. I think it's more of a, of a management and Board decision, but I think, um, it's only twenty-seven pages long and, um, to separate that doesn't seem the most logical item for me to see. I, I kind of like all of that in one summary document.
Uh, and you brought up a good point about the, uh, GASB. Will this, uh, make it more GASB compliant going with the, uh, the, uh, the ACFIR being separated as opposed to having like two sections within a single comprehensive?
I, I think from a GASB perspective, uh, KPPA, CRS and KRS can choose to do this ACFIR however they choose to do it. I don't think there was any, um, non-compliance with the GASB standards in the way that we were doing it. I don't think there'd be any non-compliance if we did one book with separate audit opinions in there and I don't think there'd be any non-compliance with separating the ACFRs into their own individual financial statements and related audit opinion.
Uh, see, I, I know for several years that we, I believe it's the GFO acknowledgement about the ACFIR. And I just, and I think that's really quite the feather in the hat of, uh, the staff putting that all together. And I, and I wouldn't, I'd hate to see it fall by the wayside by, uh, separating the two. Do you see any issue with that? I think it's quite, quite the accolades for your, your section.
Yeah, the GFOA certificate or the, the award, they would now issue one for each ACFIR. Um, so there should be, uh, one for the C ACFIR, uh, after we submit next year and one for the K ACFIR. It's, um, you know, it's based on the, the content of the ACFIR in compliance with GASB. You know, it has to have certain sections and, and be disclosed properly and that by doing two ACFRs, uh, we don't, we don't jeopardize that at all.
And I, I'm finished with my inquisition.
No problem.
I, I just want to tell you, Mike, I appreciated the work you did and your recommendation as far as going back and giving us examples of what other states tend to do. Uh, I thought that was very interesting and, and certainly put things in perspective.
Thank you.
But with that, I think at, at a minimum, it's worth the Board, uh, giving their approval to, to Mike's recommendation.
I make that one.
I would, I would make a motion that we endorse, uh, the recommendation of the two separate reports, uh, as presented by Finance.
I second.
And I'll second.
Got a motion by Bill and, uh, seconded by multiple people, Jerry and JT. So, uh, with that, Mike, again, thank you and I, I look forward to seeing
Need to vote.
I haven't done this in a lot of years. This is how I got everything passed in my day, I just didn't have a load on it. All in favor?
No discussion, no vote. Yeah, we're done.
Uh, all opposed? Eyes have it. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
That will move, we'll move down to, um, a topic that we had discussed at our last board meeting. The, uh, Investment Committee had made some recommendations that I think we were all still trying to review and wrap our hands around. Uh, Dr. Hackford, if, if you'd like to kind of give us a quick overview and, and any recommendations that you might have given where we stand at this point.
Thank you. Uh, certainly. Again, basically to review where we are on this particular issue. As we discussed at the last meeting of this body, we reviewed the fact that typically, uh, asset allocation reviews are done every three to five years. And that hadn't been done for a while. We had made a significant revision to our asset allocation about two years ago. And, and of course, uh, there've been some changes in financial markets and so forth since that time. A lot of other changes in the economy. And so it was felt that would be useful to have a comprehensive review and assessment of our asset allocation strategy and policy. I'd like to compliment our staff, uh, Steve and staff, as well as our consultant, Wilshire, for their very hard work and diligent work in looking at our asset allocation, uh, currently in terms of, uh, its relative position and any suggestions that they might make to the Investment Committee and to this body regarding adjustments to our, our Asset Allocation Committee. Our in- Investment Committee deliberated, discussed, uh, talked about, uh, the recommendations. There were actually two recommendations, if I recall correctly, that were brought to our body. We reviewed those, talked with Steve about those and the consultant. And at the end of the session, it was voted to move that, uh, one of those options, uh, to the full, uh, C Board. And we presented that. It was presented at last meeting to the C Board. We discussed and reviewed a, a number of issues, uh, of those recommendations. And at the end of the hour, uh, we were still discussing some points and questions. And so after that meeting, we decided it might be appropriate that we have picked up the discussion sort of where we left off at the last meeting. And we kind of distilled sort of three questions that we thought it would be beneficial uh, to have shared answers to and discussions of, shared with this body this afternoon. And we've asked Steve to, to work with us on that and, uh, he has prepared the materials. So I don't think Steve intends to go through review of materials that you all really had the opportunity to review prior to our previous meeting as well as prior to this meeting, but to focus on basically three questions or three issues, three topics, if you will. The first, uh, was sort of a conversation that evolved out of, uh, our last meeting and that was Steve to talk a little bit about the history of specialty credit, uh, in terms of its content and also, I think, particularly in terms of how we got to where we are. As you probably know, we are currently over allocated to specialty credit by about double. Our current asset allocation policy has specialty credit, uh, basically calculated, specified to be about ten percent of our portfolio. We're now roughly in the twenty percent range. And this became a sort of a conversation point at the last meeting, so we're gonna ask Steve to kind of explain to us how do we got to the over allocation and, and, and so forth. So I think that's important to all of us. The second, uh, question and topic that we asked Steve to talk about this afternoon is our current specialty holdings may be more definitive in terms of what those holdings actually are, what types of assets we have within that general category of specialty credit. And finally, other issues that, uh, he feels important for us to, to talk about this afternoon and maybe respond to some of the other conversations and questions that, uh, occurred at our last meeting. So that's sort of an overview, Mr. Chairman, of where we are. And, uh, with that, those introductory comments, I'd like to talk it over to, turn it over to Steve. If, if Steve, if you're there, if you would kind of share, uh, your reactions and thoughts about those sort of three major topics. And, uh, we can also open up the floor to other topics that maybe people felt they didn't really get a full answer to or would like more additional, additional information about, because this is a major decision.
Yes.
Uh, it is probably for this body and, and so forth, uh, one of the major policy decisions we are asked to make and that we, we cannot overstate that because how we allocate our resources will be a major factors in determining what we're gonna be producing in terms of investment income on our significant portfolio and, and that's gonna have an impact upon our ability to continue to meet our obligation to our retirees and also will impact the, the fees that would be charged to our employers and also our employees. So Steve, if you would please.
Thank you, Dr. Ackward. Uh, and I, I would emphasize and reiterate exactly what you said. This is, the asset allocation is the most important decision and, and, you know, what, what studies will show is it drives about ninety percent of the return variability among portfolios. So, um, you know, having this as, as the best decision, uh, that we can make is very important to the future returns of the systems. Um, and as you mentioned, the capital market assumptions, uh, you know, the, the economy broadly, but, but specifically capital market assumptions have, have changed substantially since the last time um, that the, the asset modeling work was, was performed. Uh, so the full asset liability study was performed in November of 2020. Uh, and the, the asset allocation, uh, modeling work, uh, was performed in November of 2021. Uh, as we know, sir, if you can pa- sorry, turn to page one oh six, apologies. There we go. Perfect. There we go. Perfect. And one of, one of the issues that was brought up in, in the board and in the IC was more, a, a more direct look at where the current targets are, where the targets that were approved at that IC meeting, committee meeting, as well as where the current allocation for the portfolio is. So in this chart on the, on the right, we can see the red is the current targets in the IPS. The blue on the far left is the approved revised targets. And those were approved by the Investment Committee. And then the green is that current allocation, and I believe this was as of March 22nd. So you can see, as Dr. Hackbart mentioned, we, we're overweight significantly from target on the specialty credits. We're modestly overweight in public equities with corresponding underweights in private equity, real estate and real return. But we're relative to where the approved, the new approved targets are that the IC approved and where the current allocations are. Most of the asset classes are pretty close to in line. So the actual portfolio looks very similar to what the asset allocation targets are that were approved by the Investment Committee. The last time that this allocation work was done, as I mentioned, in November of 2021, capital market assumptions were very different. You know, the, the largest change, the most significant change to capital market assumptions have been in core fixed income and specialty credit slash high yield. Any real investment or asset class that has a yield component, as we all know, yields have risen from kind of historic lows. The, the Fed has taken rates up very quickly and very sharply. And that has changed materially the outlook for a number of asset classes. You can go to the next page, Sherry, please. And what this really does, so we, we, well, Dr. Hackbart mentioned that we have a curiosity to reviewing our asset allocation. We look at our asset allocation, you know, at least annually and formally on a, on a, on a two to five year basis. But this is something that we're evaluating on a continuous basis. And what these changes in the capital market assumptions really presents is an opportunity to meaningfully lower the expected risk levels of the portfolio. So on that graph on the right is this efficient frontier. So we see where the current targets are. And the current targets, we, we kind of versus what has been approved by the IC. We see that, you know, we have an opportunity to really create more efficient portfolios and that de-risks. So we've lowered the expected risk by almost 10% relative to the current targets while maintaining a similar level of expected return, creating a portfolio with a higher cash yield, increasing liquidity and, and increasing the expected sharp ratio of the portfolio going forward. Also creates a more diversified balanced portfolio with less dependency on economic growth. And just as importantly, it really, this was a discussion in the last board meeting. Their path does matter here for, for performance. And it lowers the risk and the magnitude of significant drawdowns in the portfolios, which I think is important. It's not to say that we anticipate a significant deterioration in, in markets, but lowering that risk and the potential magnitude if, if such events were to occur is, is important for future performance of the systems. We switch to page 110, please. As Dr. Hackbart mentioned, we wanted to, to do a little bit of, provide a little bit of information about how we got to where we are with the current allocations. And so if we go back in time, we dial back to 2021, the beginning of 2021, pre-separation. And we look at where the asset allocation targets were in the IPS. And then the, the first standalone CERS IPS and asset allocation targets in the middle. We can see that the most substantial changes were the specialty credit target allocation was reduced from 15% target to a 10% target. At the same time, what was the opportunistic asset class was eliminated. And that 3% investment was, was moved and reclassified from opportunistic to specialty credit. So immediately we were, we were outside of the bounds of the ranges that were established in the new IPS for the specialty credit. And I would highlight that any appreciation at that point, so we've, we've had, obviously, markets have gone up and down. Different asset classes have, have had different degrees of underperformance and outperformance. But within that specialty credit allocation, again, that's, you know, what we consider that private credits as well as high yield. So public high yield bonds, we'll get into that in a minute, and, and public high yield loans. No new managers have been added to that specialty credit since the 2021, the last 2021 IPS revision. So we haven't made any new investments and new managers in that. Capitals come in and out. We have capital that's been committed, that's been called, we've received distribution. So there has been flow within that asset class, but no new commitments have been made by the systems within that asset class. I would caveat that what we did earlier last, at the beginning of last year, we re-upped with an existing manager. So essentially rolling our exposure from one fund series to the next fund series, but no new additional capital was, was committed at that time. I'll pause there for questions. That was, that was a, a big topic in the, in the last board meeting. If there's any questions on, on kind of how we got to where we are within the, the current allocations.
Steve, one question?
Sure.
I, I noticed in, in your footnote that high yield bond is included in your specialty credit.
That's correct.
Out of that, that 20, whatever, 21% that we've got in, in specialty credit currently, how much of you, of that would you say is publicly traded high yield bond?
If we turn to, it's a great question. Next page, please. If we look at that, like our current allocation, about 49% is what we would traditionally classify as private credit. 38% is in public high yield bonds and loans. And 14% is in what's called a global multi-sector credit that invest in, within the guidelines is allowed to invest with, with both in, in public markets and in private securities. So those would be below, primarily below investment grade investments on the public side and then private, unrated private securities. So somewhere roughly, you know, around, you know, that, that account, that's a singular account. That account sometimes, you know, is, it'd be fair to say it's 50/50. So that, that would, that'd be a rough assessment. So 45% of that current allocation is in what would be public high yield bonds and loans.
I know one of the concerns that I've heard expressed by a few trustees with regard to the, the true private credit side is with regard to the valuation and with regard to the, I don't want to say regulatory, but, but the due diligence with regard to being able to actually determine where those dollars need to go as far as on a manager and issue basis as well as, you know, evaluation, what, what the part of the portfolio is actually worth. I think it might be worth pointing out, based on, on what research I've done, that you, you have sectors that are valued daily and you've got sectors that may not be valued but once a year. Is that true to your portfolio as well?
Within the private credit sector, the majority of investments are valued. And Anthony will jump in as well. And these are, these can be, again, that it, it tends to be part of our LPAs, our, the agreements that we have with managers, the, the valuation cycle and the auditing of those valuations. We typically get quarterly valuations for a number of asset classes and then an audited financial for annuals. So you're right. I mean, that's, that's, that's part of the difficulties in, in a lot of private, you know, like private equity, private debt, anything that's a private asset class that doesn't have a traditional market, mark to market. Now, we will see, you'll get insightful information in secondary. Some of these, some of these investments trade on secondary market. So, you know, there's some visibility into that. There's a number of data providers that do a good job of providing how those markets are doing. But we do rely on the valuation methodology of the manager that, that does go through a process to determine what the value of our investments are on any, at any point in time. Obviously, there's a realization ultimately that is, you know, that's the actual when we get the dollars back.
And we get it every quarter, right? It's not like the private equity or other equity related assets where it's like, yeah, I think it's this. And you can kind of, there's a lot of room to play with that. I mean, for credit, it's like, well, are they paying us or not, right? They're making interest payments. So it's not as complicated as some of the other, maybe some of those strategies are as opaque as other things. Like, I mean, there's a manager, that's a legacy manager we have. Its company finally went bankrupt a couple of years ago. It's a, it's a travel related company, so it was hurt hard by COVID. But they borrowed over a billion dollars and earned, you know, a hundred million EBITDA at, when they were doing well. Obviously went to zero or negative when COVID happened. The private equity firm still held it at one and a half times, right? Obviously, all of us can do back of the envelope math and know that that is a zero. It's not, there is no equity value because it can't even cover the debt, right? But some of that stuff is what we have to do in terms of underwriting managers. Their, their processes of underwriting credit, managing them and what kind of loan documentation they have and how they manage through any issues they have. Because there are going to be, right? Everybody's taking risks and, you know, some of them are not going to work out or not maybe work out in the way they plan. And, but from having to, that's part of why we're in favor of the credit side, right? Because we're at the top of the capital structure, you have the first claims on the assets in the company. And, and you, and then it's up to us to figure out whether we found the right managers that are going to enforce those rights and keep the value that we have from lending out our money, our precious capital. So that's kind of how the credit is. I mean, I know specialty credit can seem like it's, you know, maybe a worrisome asset class, but in the end, it's, it's lending out money, right? In some form or fashion. And whether, whether or not you're good at picking your borrowers and, you know, structuring your credits and making sure you get paid back. Yeah, that's the, that's the art of it there.
Yeah. And to Anthony's point, that's, that's a great point. The, the difference, one, one of the key differences between the private equity and, and private debt here is, is we have, you know, they're, they're constantly having cash flowing, right? So there, there are the current, right? And these are the conversations we have with existing managers. And, you know, we talk about the troubled credits in a portfolio, ones that aren't current. But it's a lot easier to have a, a, a feel for the health of an investment when they're current on their payments, which they're, you know, the, the loan payments. So they're, if they're making loan payments, we, plus they, the, the managers get a lot of financial information on these companies that's, you know, is non-public stuff. So you're right, the, the valuation at any point in time as to what we could sell an investment for. You know, that, that's always going to be a meeting of the minds, right? What, what, what a buyer wants, what a seller wants. But as to the, the financial health of the entities that are borrowing that, that we've lent money to, we have a lot more insight into that because they're continuously cash flowing.
Really? Got your hand up? Yes.
Yes. Roll back to previous conversation about specialty credit. Said no new dollars had been invested, but that there was a rollover reinvestment. Help me understand the, the strategy there when we were overweight in that, in that class to do that rollover.
Well, we wanted to maintain exposure to that manager specifically to, given the economics. That was something that's the presentation that was made to the Investment Committee and to the board and was approved. The economics of it were very compelling. And at, at that point, we were, we were interested in the asset class and the outlook for the asset class. So we, we didn't, we essentially, we, we took what the capital that we had already committed and they had invested. And as that, we received disbursements, they roll into the new investment. So it's, it's, it's a fund to fund. That's why it's called a re-up and it wasn't, it's, it's kind of like a continuation almost.
Yeah. So our other accounts, like the one that's on the next page with Blue Torch is a separate account. So it's just us and that's how we've had it allocated and it will continue until, you know, unless us or the manager wants it to stop. So obviously we're monitoring their performance and understanding how, how they're doing and, and, and whether they're, and whether their credits and things are, are being managed well. I think back to what Steve was saying in terms of them being close to the companies they, they have. For Blue Torch, we speak about amendments because they, you know, you can amend your credit agreement. Obviously, if the company are having issues, if you have tighter documentation, you can, you bring them to the table. And obviously you can trade or you can get more value for providing waivers or amendments to the credit agreement to give them some more room. That can be in the form of higher fees, more interest, better reporting. There's all kinds of things that, that I want to know what they're, what they're getting for, for changing the group, right? Because there should, there is some value in that because these companies need, need the capital and they need to not be, they still be in compliance with our documents. And so the manager we have is able to, to, to preserve value or improve it based on, based on their negotiating.
Betty, you get chained up?
Yes. Could you talk a little bit about how economic trends affect these smaller companies that receive these loans in this particular market sector?
Sure. So these, these tend to focus, you're right, on smaller, what, what we, there's a, there's a large scale here of the size of the companies and these were traditionally serviced by banks, right? So this is, the, the banks have primarily stepped out of that, that part of the market, capital constraints. So the middle market, which is the bulk of where private lending occurs, these are not by any means mom and pop shop small, small businesses. They tend to be medium sized businesses. Some could access public markets but choose for a variety of reasons to access capital through private markets. You know, much, they'll, they'll behave much like many of the public companies. The most recent data that I looked at, you know, they, they tend to perform better. This sector of the market tends to perform better through market cycles. So if we look at the GFC, the realized losses given defaults were lower in what is private credit than it was in traditional high yield bonds and high yield loans. One of the things that, you know, what their companies, it's, it's, it's company by company. That's, that's why we really look at managers with a, a robust credit process and underwriting process. They tend to have more control over covenants. And they're, they, they, they tend to be able to, to work with the companies and structure the deals that have greater benefit to us, the, the, the lenders. So while every company is exposed to economic cycles and certainly, as Anthony mentioned, we will have credits in across this, this portfolio that experience difficulties. That's one of the benefits of, of the, the private credit side is the ability of the managers to work with the borrowers to restructure deals. He was talking about Blue Torch specifically and some of the, some of the things they are able to do. You know, a lot of, as we saw during COVID, you know, there, there were a lot of companies and companies in the portfolios that, that experienced difficulties, but we didn't have any realized defaults there. You know, or, or didn't experience losses given defaults there. And part of that is their ability to restructure deals. So I think it's, every, every company, whether it's a public equity, private equity, small, large, to some extent, you know, are going to, are going to experience different degrees of impact from where we are in the economic cycle. What our focus is, is really on looking at the managers, both that have the ability and experience to work with creditors when they do have difficulties. But more importantly, the robustness of their underwriting process. That's why we tend to, you know, there, there are very, very large deals, very, very large managers and funds that have a rush to deploy capital to some extent. They, they have a need to deploy and maybe at times their, their process may not be as robust or they, they, they may bend a little bit in order to get deals done. You know, a lot of these, they're, you know, we're, we're the, the manager is the primary lender here for the, for the deals we're in. These, these aren't necessarily, you know, a large group of participating lenders in a deal. So they get to dictate the terms, they get to dictate the protections that they want in a deal. And we have managers that'll walk away from deals if, if the protections aren't sufficient. Even if it's great pricing, even if it's, it's a great company, if they don't feel there's sufficient protection for our money that they're investing, they'll walk away from that deal.
Steve, just kind of reviewing the recommendation and looking at your, the targets. I think it's important for us to focus on targets because we're talking about long-term. And we obviously realize And we obviously realize that there can be variation from those targets from time period to time period for a variety of reasons, capital markets, uh, interest rate changes and things of that nature. I noted with some concern that you're recommending an increase in specialty credit, not only dealing with the current over allocation, but increasing it by four percent, up to twenty-three percent. And that's cost, coming at a cost to our allocation to some of our other major targets. Apparently about seven percent reduction in the targets for equities. And certainly I think the fact that we're looking long-term, that's an important consideration. Capital market assumptions change from year to year. The fact that they've changed since two years ago is important, but they're going to continue to change in our major, and I think we have to be concerned about that. In terms of being able to make the adjustment in our asset allocation to be more consistent with our targets, uh, which is, we're now over-allocated, but we're increasing the over-allocation compared to our, our current history. We're reducing real estate, we're dealing, reducing real return, and we're reducing equities by seven percent as a target.
I think that's a bit of anchoring on the Dr. Hack part, I think. What, what was passed is, is, is good, but, and also, I think there's two things. One, we can look at what, um, the allocations were in 2021, the target was reduced significantly from where it was, and we have a lot of these, um, we had a lot of these allocations that are private and that were attractive and got more attractive as rates went up. Um, and so I think that's why this, um, this, the recommendation has been made and was approved by the investment committee, right? If you go back to the, um, very, what slide is that it's 108? Um, for Wilshire, this is not us, right? This is their modeling work. They project ten-year expected returns and even thirty, which is maybe a lot of, maybe noisy, given you can't really compound assumptions for that long, get anything really that robust, but it's higher than public equity, right? And even though, yes, equity have done well for the long term, but we're looking forward from now, right? Because, yes, capital market assumptions do change, um, but rates have also gone down for forty years and now they have gone up significantly in the past few. So that's changed the math and that's why the recommendation, um, was to be back at a higher level, especially credit, simply because I think as Lyle and others have said, you can get a similar return for less risk. And that's, that's just math right there, that's not anyone's opinion, that's just objective numbers.
Yeah, and I think as we talked about both at the investment committee and at the last board, if we went with, uh, again, the modeling work that was done by Wilshire, uh, we, we were very iterative in that and, and put specific constraints because, uh, we didn't, we didn't, we're not looking at where we are currently allocated, model to model, it's what the current target is versus the revised as opposed to where we are actually allocated. So looking at those modeling, if you did an unconstrained model, it would put zero in public equity, right? And that's partially because equity risk premiums are nearing all-time lows.
I'm only talking about targets, okay?
Targets, right, so target, target to target, going from, from, you know, we, we had a target, again, remember when, uh, the expected returns for core fixed income were three hundred basis points lower, for specialty credit were three hundred basis points lower than they are currently? Um, and we, the modeling pushed and capital market assumptions pushed CRS and a number of public plans out the risk spectrum in order to build portfolios that would achieve assumed rates of return. Uh, and part of that was, you know, so we, we, we moved to a target of fifty percent in public equities. If we reran the models now and if, if Wilshire ran an unconstrained model and they did this and, and we presented this to the IC, if you, if you put no constraints on your modeling and just said run based on these capital market assumptions, so, so expected returns, expected risk correlations, and it would say, put zero percent in public equity right now. Now, I agree, that's, that's not realistic, that's not what we want to do, we don't want to make, you know, uh, like significant changes to an asset allocation, uh, because again, in, in a couple of years' time, uh, those could certainly change. And again, we have, we, that's part of the reason we have ranges to operate within. Um, you know, we're not always going to be, to your point, we're not always going to be on target, there's going to be market movements that move us off, there's going to be, um, you know, views, changes in views or expectations that, that may adjust, uh, how we're actually positioned relative to those targets.
Steve, I'll just add to that, um, you know, those, uh, very well outlined by Steve and Anthony, and those, the, those issues are the reasons why when we do the modeling, we put constraints on, because as Steve said, if we, we didn't have any constraints right now, right now core, in our most recent assumptions, core fixed income over the next ten years is expected to outperform US public equity. That's a result of where rates are right now and where equity valuations are right now. So the two, uh, are very different in terms of the forward-looking ten years, but that's the reason we have the constraints, because as Steve said, we're, we don't want to go to zero percent US equity in a case like that, but we do want to take advantage of those relationships that we see in the development of capital market assumptions.
Mr. Powell has his hand raised?
Yeah, Jerry?
Yes, let me lower that far, I forget it. Uh, I'm, I'm just concerned about lowering or reducing the, uh, the, the public equity. You know, I, I think the, uh, specialty credit is a great investment and I, and some of the presentations that has been through specialty credit is, uh, very attractive, but I, I just, uh, just not a big fan of, because the public equity has done so good lately, uh, of reducing, uh, reducing that. But, but I, I do think that the specialty credit, because, uh, it's performed well for us and with the interest, uh, the, uh, the Treasury, uh, has made it even better, I'm, I'm assuming, I haven't followed a lot of it like I used to when I was on the investment committee, but going by the, what had trended previously, uh, I know that, uh, they, they do a good job.
And if we, if we look at where the shift, um, you know, both Wilshire and, and Wilshire can comment, other clients' recommendations, what other large pension plans are doing, what other large consultants are recommending, um, it really is a shift. Uh, you know, you hear it too many times, uh, uh, kind of a, an opportunity of a lifetime thing, right? You'll, you'll hear a hundred of those in your lifetime, but it's, it really is a, uh, I think a, a very attractive risk-adjusted return, uh, for an asset class right now. Um, you know, and part of the thing, I, I, I think we, we do have to be cautious, I, again, I, I don't feel like we, you know, we, we wouldn't necessarily want to drop, uh, public equities down to zero right now, we wouldn't want to drop them five percent, you know, tomorrow. Um, but I think we get, we get caught up a little bit in past performance, right? What's, what's past performance relative to what future expectations are? One of the reasons, um, you know, we, we see probably lower expectations for public equities exactly because they have done so well. Not to say that they're not, you know, that, that they're going to have a, a huge draw time anytime soon, but, um, you know, that, that historical relationship, they, they tend to hold and, and after periods of significant outperformance, you have moderation. Um, so I don't think we, we expect twenty percent returns from public equity every year going forward, but we want to be in a position to take advantage of it. So if we, if we, if we take down, uh, some positioning that gives us dry powder to, to be able to redeploy, should we, um, you know, experience a, a, some type of, not, not even as significant, but, but some type of market dislocation, right? We want to be able to take advantage of that.
Yep, yeah, and I'll just add, Steve, that's why in, in the recommended policy versus the current, it's act, you know, it's only a, an absolute reduction of five percent in that, in that public equity component. For all these reasons we've talked about, we want to take advantage of what we can learn from current valuations, from capital market assumptions, but obviously we want to put constraints around that too.
And David, just to add to that, if we were to look back to the 2021 target policies, this forty-five percent recommendation is still above where we were back in 2021. So again, going back to the comment Steve made earlier about where yields are today, giving us a chance to de-risk and earn the same level of return, we're just kind of reversing the reach for yield that so many pension plans had to take to get to their discount rates when they had to be eighty, eighty-five percent in growth assets. We're just kind of dialing back the growth exposure a little bit, but we're certainly not making radical adjustments to the strategic asset allocation.
And you made a perfect, uh, point, and that's kind of what I was looking back, because before we changed this, we, uh, we, we were getting hurt on our public equities, uh, back, uh, even a couple of, uh, CIOs ago, uh, we didn't have the, uh, public equity, uh, allocation available to keep us from, uh, I wouldn't say hurt, but we could not earn as much as we could and we was a little slow on the uptake. And perhaps I'm just a little gun-shy about that change, I go, you know, making that step back, uh, so that, that's my concern, uh, after seeing what happened, you know, in eighteen, nineteen, uh, time period when we were, we were,
And that's the nice part about, that's the nice part about these models is they take the behavioral finance part out of it and we're developing these forward-looking assumptions. We are putting constraints around them so that we're not oversteering here and moving from a fifty percent target down to zero, but we are recognizing that we want to take advantage of these relative relationships broadly between ex- equity and yield-bearing assets or fixed income.
I, I think the area that,
Yeah, that's, like I said, I, I, I'm a proponent, I was, uh, uh, everything that I've learned about it is, uh, particularly through the managers that our investment team engage, they, they really seem to have a really good grasp on, in that credit area. So, uh, kudos to the investment team and picking those good managers and, but I, like I said, I was, I'm, I'm maybe a little gun-shy from what we, uh, where we could underperform because of the, we didn't have the, uh, public equities, uh, sooner, so, okay, I appreciate that information, thank you, but all three up.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I, as Steve indicated, and, and anything you read anywhere, he's exactly right.
Dr. Hackart, that's all we really have prepared. I, I know, uh, we were going to cover a little bit more on, on the, um, the specialty credit, uh, Blue Torch example, but I think we've, we've covered most of that. Um, you know, the, the one thing I would highlight there, obviously we've talked about, uh, you know, these, these tend to cash flow, so we get distributions, um, you know, it's not, uh, locked up forever cash that we see in some, some other asset classes, uh, you know, and I know there was a focus on, on the fee side. Um, you know, I, I would say the, the bulk of the investments that we have in that asset class, uh, certainly are well below rack rates and things that you see publicized a lot, uh, you know, we work hard with our managers to, to squeeze down fees as much as possible and, and I think we're, we're, we're pretty happy with the level of fees that we pay, uh, in that asset class.
In the deceased's point, to put some numbers around it, I know fees are important expenses, I think as well, since interest rates, like we said, have gone up. So we receive higher interest rates, but we also have to pay higher interest rates for the leverage that our managers use. So just to say for 2023, since we have our four key statements now, on around two-hundred-ish million of deployed, uh, for Blue Torch, we received, um, twenty-four million of net income. So that's, investment income was forty-six, right? But then you have to subtract that fees and the interest and everything else, but after all that, you're still around twenty-four million, which is, you know, double-digit yields comfortably. And so that's kind of what's happening with credit and that, again, they're firstly in, they're the top of the stack for every, every company they have and their lead for about eighty percent of their deals. So their, their underwriting, like Steve said, they're dictating terms, managing things closely, very close to borrowers and their management and, and being very good stewards of our capital, so.
Betty, you got your hand up? Can you hear me?
So, could, could I ask, um, you to walk through, um, the bottom of this chart? Uh, you, you said, uh, a minute ago that, um, core fixed income would outperform, uh, public, public equity in the next ten years. Did I hear that right?
Yeah, I'll just take that, Steve, since that was me who said that. I said that in reference to our current assumptions that are, uh, out effective March thirty-one of this year. This chart on the bottom of this page is from 2021 and this shows the difference between those expectations then and where they are now.
Bill, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, we, we think we've had a mic problem here for a few minutes.
Well, I didn't mean to speak over anybody.
No, 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 you're, you're, you're fine, we, we've just, you know, tech is a wonderful thing when it works, as we say. You know, at this point, I, I think what we need to do is send this allocation back to, uh, the investment committee to, to tighten up not just the targets, but maybe the ranges on exactly where we want to go. Because I think from what I'm hearing from most people, it's not necessarily the concern over specialty credit as much as where do those assets come from at this stage of the game. Uh, and I, and I, I think Dr. Hackford will have a, uh, a, a tar- a target allocation, Dave, if you all can model it, to kind of see where that puts us in between the two original recommendations. I think that's, that's a good idea, I think it's a part of our responsibility is, is to benefit from the modeling efforts, that's always the case. But we also need to reflect on our own judgments and thoughts and so forth based upon the information that's provided, which has been excellent from both, uh, Steve and staff and, and also our consultant, but we also need to reflect on these issues because it is the most important decision we make. And I think there've been some concerns raised and I think we need to, we would accept that back in the committee, as chairman, uh, to reflect on those. And for example, some of the things what I'd like to have a look at is whether, if the goal is to reallocate additional resources to specialty credit, that we could take those from real estate and real return, for example, and we could, that would permit us to stay in the same relative target for equities, which seems to be emerging as maybe the consensus of this committee, so, of this board. So I would like to have that particular option looked at in terms of, uh, its risk considerations relative to return as well as, uh, the one that we now are considering as a proposal. And, and on top of that, Steve, I think one of the things that we'll be interested in seeing is a timeline to get there, because, you know, not only are we, do we have contributions coming in, but we certainly have an increased income from that specialty credit area that's going to provide cash that could be reinvested maybe in other places other than where, where it's at now.
Sure.
So if there was no objection, we'll, I'll entertain a motion that we, uh, send that back down to the investment committee for further review. So I'm, uh, a motion by,
Second.
Second by, not sure who.
Jerry Powell.
Jerry, thank you. All in favor, signal if I was saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
As have it. Betty, uh, at this time, I'm going to ask you to cover the strategic plan material. Uh, there was quite a bit of information in there that looked pretty well on target to me, but I think everybody would like to know, you know, timelines and, and areas of focus.
Thank you, uh, we, we don't really need to make a decision on this one today and I can give a real quick overview on this. Uh, when I originally recommended a strategic planning process, it was to give the trustees an opportunity to outline where they thought we ought to go with the CERS, uh, governance board. Um, so what we have at this point and what I've put in this particular draft, we have two committees that, or three committees that have adopted some strategic objectives and I've dropped them into the, um, format for the strategic plan. Uh, we have one committee that's still working on theirs, uh, so, uh, there's additional work to do. I would hope that in the, um, by September, we'd be able to finalize this to kind of outline the, uh, a strategic plan for governance, uh, not for any of the administrative details. I think that the KPPA strategic plan will deal with day-to-day administrative-type functions. This is strictly for the trustees to outline, uh, where we would like to go with governance. So, uh, rough timeline would be approval in, final approval in September and over the summer, the, uh, committee, uh, committees that are working on, on their objectives can finalize, um, those recommendations that they bring to the board.
One quick point, uh, the joint, uh, healthcare, uh, since it covers both, it's, covers both K and C, it's not a separate entity, uh, it's not part of this, it will fall under the KPPA's, uh, strategic plan.
Yes, that was a decision that Jerry and I made together. Uh, we just decided that since that one covered both boards, it was more appropriate to leave it on the KPPA. We just decided that since that one covered both boards, it was more appropriate to leave it on the KPPA.
Okay, anybody have questions for Ms. Betty?
Back to you, Mr.
David, do you want to give us your
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My, my report is in board book. I'll answer any question that anyone may have either during the context of this meeting or if you want to give me a call to ask a question about any of the items that are listed there. I will simply say that through March 31 of '24, all trustees who have that 12-month date for training have completed the appropriate number of training hours. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is Dave with us?
Oh, Dave Eager.
Yes, I'm sorry. We may have worn him out today already.
He's here, but I see him muted and his camera's on.
There I am.
He's back.
Sorry, David.
Helping just like a coach.
Would you like to give us an update on, on KPPA?
Yeah, well, the report is in the, it should be in the board books, I'm trying to, my camera here.
We can see you now.
I didn't, I didn't anticipate it three hours away. The report is in, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think our most recent news is the House bill, our 99, the Housekeeping Bill got passed and the governor apparently has signed it, so we're in good shape. I, I tend to go into more detail when I'm dealing with the KPPA board, maybe I shouldn't, but, but and I also don't tend to get many questions from the KPPA board. It's, I have mentioned, and it's kept somewhat irrelevant, but there's a worldwide retirement crisis. We're kind of caught up in it. It's particularly acute in Japan and some of the European countries. But we've been, we have been under pressure for some time with, and particularly in the K plan, the retire rate, number of retirees exceeding the number of actives by, by 1 to 0.6. It's not so acute with the C plans, but it's something to be mindful longer term that can put some pressure on cash flow in the future. I don't know, the Wilshire's got any thoughts on that, but it, it's, we did start paying much more attention to cash flow probably three years ago. It's too bad we didn't 10 years ago because we were in a much worse cash flow situation than we are now, but with higher contribution rates, that's, that's mitigated some of that concern. But I'll, I'll take any questions that anybody has or I can follow up individually.
Anybody have questions for Dave? Okay, here you go, Dave, appreciate you hanging around for
Yeah, sorry, it took me, took me so long to log in, sorry about that.
Michael, I understand we've got material for a closed session, all of that. Anything pertinent there that we need to be updated on?
There is one item specifically that we do need some direction, just some direction from the board. I'll be as quick as possible.
Entertain a motion to go into executive session and discuss legal or potential legal action.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
A question for Michael, please. Is there any reason for staff other than yourself to be in the meeting?
I don't think so. Okay. As quick as I can possibly make it.
I'd just ask all the staff except Sherry, then just if they're on to
Michael, do you want Nathan and Addis to ground?
Yeah, I do need a couple of the man staff, yes.
Okay.
And Carrie.
Sherry or Michael, who's, Michael, you've got the statement that needs to be read prior to going into session.
I do. A motion having been made in open session to move into closed session for a specific purpose and such motion having carried by a majority vote in open public session, the board shall now enter closed session to consider litigation pursuant to KRS 61.8101C because of the necessity of protecting the confidentiality of the system's litigation strategy and preserving any available attorney-client privilege.